Then we'll move on to a conversation about length of service award program. Lo sap adjustments for Southampton Town ambulance districts. And then we'll probably go into executive session after that. So let's start with the draft agenda. And this again is for October 24th meeting. The meeting will be held in the evening at 6:00 PM here at Town Hall and it'll be hybrid meetings as well. And we have nine public hearings. It could be a long day.
And 101 pages.
And a very, yes, it's long. So I did the Evelyn Wood speed reading class. No, I didn't.
You needed it.
We're gonna need it. Let's try to go through this as quick as possible. The first one is on the 24 preliminary budget. The second hearing is to consider increases proposed in the maximum amounts to be expended annually in the town of Southampton special districts. Third is on to consider a change in non-conforming use at 424 North Sea Road, North Sea. Fourth is consider amending Town Code Chapter 169 flood damage prevention to be consistent with state program changes. Fifth is public hearing regarding the lease of town land for the purpose of design, construction, and management of wireless communication structure. That's the one on Doon Road. Sixth is public hearing for the proposed recipients of the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program. Seventh is a public hearing to consider the designation of a historic district in the hamlet of Bridgehampton to be known as the Bridgehampton Bulls Head Main Street Historic District. Eight is a public hearing as relates to improvements to the Bridgehampton Beach Erosion Control District. Nine is a public hearing as relates to improvements to the Sagaponic Beach Erosion Control District pursuant to Town Law 202B. So we're gonna have quite a bit of time just spent on the hearings before we even get to the resolutions. Because we have, some of those may take some time to get through. All right, moving on to resolutions. 44455 authorized change order for the general construction portion of the Southampton Volunteer Ambulance Facility with Stalco General Contractors.
44458 authorized purchase of two commercial zero-turn mowers from All Island Equipment Corp. using the ice lift contract. 44475 authorized purchases and installation for guide rails furnished and installed from United Fence and Guard Rail Corp. using Suffolk County contract. 44482 authorized purchases from Northeast Sweepers and Rentals Incorporated for Rabo Fayette Group sweeper parts and service using Sourcewell contract.
Okay, and remember, if somebody has a question, just we can stop and try to answer that question.
Sunday, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor to the very first resolution. Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. So 44440 authorized supervisor to execute 23 contract with Midday Communications for digital voice recording systems utilized for the, in the 911 dispatch center of the police department. And that is cosponsored by Ms. Kivoni. 44548 authorized supervisor to assign a no-cost time extension with D and B Engineering and Architects for the Brownfield Cleanup Program remedial site investigation for the Damascus landfill.
44569 authorized supervisor to sign a no-cost, no costs time extension for Sagaponic Pond for inlet management and aquatic habitat restoration.
44456 authorized supervisor to sign an agreement with Suffolk County for the distribution of STOA funds for the operation of South Fork Community Connection.
Town Board Resolution 44463 authorized supervisor to sign catering contract for a senior service holiday park. Town Board Resolution 44470 authorized supervisor to sign contract extension for banners and signs with Fisher Signs and Shirts LLC.
44549 authorized supervisor to sign contact extension with United Metro Energy Corp. for ultra-low diesel fuel.
Resolution 44552 cancel RFP in 2022 notice to proposers and reject proposals for the purchase and private redevelopment of the property located at 20 Shinnecock Road Hampton Bay.
Sunday, I'd like to be added to that.
So this, right, so this will formally reject all the bids for the Bel Air?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I've had conversations with the.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
With the bidders. All right, 44444 authorized supervisor to sign contract with Liro Engineering, Inc. for professional services related to asbestos project design and monitoring for 20 Shinnecock Road Hampton Bay. So that is also for Bel Air. That will engineer the plan for demolition because there's some concerns about asbestos on that property. Right now, the funding source is, I believe, the Hampton Bay's waterfront revitalization money that we set aside as a loan. We loaned more than we needed. However, you know, at some point, if we decide to give this property or portions of this property to CPF, future funding for the demolition could come out of CPF. 44501 authorized purchase of engraving services from Placonic Monument Works for the Windsor Heart Project. 44555 authorized supervisor to execute a contract with Shalif and Rogers Architects for the Hampton Life Saving Station. 44399 authorized supervisor to execute an extended agreement with Leonard J. Marquesi CPA as it relates to professional services for the Finn Project. 44573 authorized supervisor to execute any and all documents pertaining to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and Basin Species Grant Program 2023 Round 3.
44544 authorized supervisor to sign a consulting contract with H2M Architects Engineers Landseaving and Landscape Architecture to provide on-call engineering services to the Hampton Bay's Water District.
44580 authorized supervisor to sign a contract extension with the Pure Enterprises also doing businesses Ricky's Plumbing Supply for the spot supply of plumbing supplies to the town.
Lot of plumbing.
Lot of plumbing.
44464 authorized supervisor to sign an amended license agreement with Audio Enterprise Group, Inc. 44554 authorized supervisor to sign and extend and amend contract with LK McLean for professional services provided for historic projects for the Community Preservation Department. 44565 authorized supervisor to sign any and all agreements for award of Community Preservation Fund 20% water quality improvement projects, aquatic restoration, and non-point source abatement.
Sunday, before we go on, I'd like to be added to 44554. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
44544, that's the for the Water District?
Historic.
Which one?
CPF Historic Districts. Page 22.
44544, you said? 4?
44554.
44554, okay. Got it, got it. That's the, okay, the historic project.
Correct.
Okay, got it, I'm sorry. 44558 authorized supervisor to sign any and all agreements for award of Community Preservation 20% Water Quality Improvement Project Funds, waste water treatment projects.
44575 authorized supervisor to sign contract extension for district-wide well and pump maintenance and repair at the Hampton Bay's Water District with Delta Well and Pump Company Incorporated. 44576 authorized supervisor to sign contract with York Labs for the Hampton Bay's Water District.
Town Board Resolution ID 44446 is authorized supervisor to sign, sign extensions with Dry Stick Decal Corp. Doing Businesses Ride-In and Concept Print.
44461 declare items surplus and authorize disposal of computer equipment.
Town Board Resolution ID 44582 recall and amend, recall and amend authorize the supervisor renew an agreement with RecPro Software by RC Systems to manage its parks and recreation operations.
Town Board Resolution ID 44472 recall and amend Resolution 2023-1080 authorized supervisor to sign a contract with LK McLean Associates PC for engineering, design, and permitting services at Bay Avenue East Hampton Bay. Town Board Resolution ID 44473 recall and amend Resolution 2023-1081 authorized supervisor to sign a contract with LK McLean Associates PC for engineering, design, and permitting services for shoreline stabilization at the North Sea Road in Southampton.
Could I be added to that, Sunday?
Certainly.
ID 44435 recall and amend Resolution 2023-1089 authorize the supervisor to sign an amended agreement for awards of Community Preservation Fund CPF 20% Water Quality Improvement Project Funds for Susan's Illusion LLC slash Armin and Judy. Town Board Resolution ID 44469 is to recall and amend Resolution Number 2023-1093 award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for heavy haul tractor with trucks incorporated Doing Business Long Island Freight Liner. 44462 recall and amend Resolution Number 2023-646 authorized supervisor to execute a 2023 service and maintenance agreement with Best Climate Control for maintenance and service on the air conditioning and heating equipment at Southampton Town Police Department.
ID Number 44551 the 2023 notice to bidders for a 2022 F-150 four-by-four Super Crew.
44578 2023 notice to bidders for hardware and various items for pickup. 44553 2023 notice to bidders for vehicle graphics. ID 44471 the 2023 notice to bidders for closed hot shell contained projector trailer with hydraulic roof opening. Town Board Resolution 44574 the 2023 notice to bidders for embroidered silk, embroidered and silk screened clothing. And that's for Parks Department uniforms.
Town Board Resolution ID 44583 the 2023 notice to bidders for furnish and deliver meter pits and ancillary equipment.
44447 accept donation for Southampton Town Police Department. It's a $12,500 donation from Fanatics, Inc., which I don't know what they do. 44503 amends 2023 budget for various departments. 44481 authorized closure of capital projects. 44556 considers adoption of the annual CPF Pilot Program Plan 2023-24 tax year. Annual CPF Pilot Payment Plan 2023-24 tax year.
Could I be added to that, please?
Yes.
44478 amends the 24 preliminary budget for Highway Department. De-schedule. 44484 recall and amend Town Board Resolution Number 2023-1170 as it relates to additional legal fees for the law firm Sertiman, Balin, Adler, and Hyman LLP. All right, we're about halfway through now. Tommy John?
44505 a resolution amending the Hampton Bay's Ambulance District Volunteer Ambulance Workers Length of Service Award Program Lo Sap by increasing the monthly service award from $20 to $30 and scheduling a referendum to be held on December 6, 2023. We're going to be hearing a presentation today on this subject for this and the following resolutions. 44504 resolution amending the Northampton Flanders Ambulance District Volunteer Ambulance Workers Length of Service Award Program by increasing the monthly service award from $20 to $30 and scheduling a referendum to be held on December 6, 2023. Town Board Resolution 44506 a resolution amending the Southampton Ambulance District Volunteer Workers Length of Service Awards Program Lo Sap by increasing the monthly service award from $20 to $30 and scheduling a referendum to be held on December 6. And our fourth one, resolution amending 44507 a resolution amending the West Hampton Ambulance District Volunteer Ambulance Workers Length of Service Award Program by increasing the monthly service awards from $20 to $30 and scheduling a referendum to be held on December 6.
Could I be added to all of those, Sunday?
Me too, Sunday.
Yeah, same with me, please.
The whole board, I guess.
Just increase the prospects that I'm going through. All right, 44584 notice adoption to amend Chapter 247 open space to include provisions for clustering of commercial property proposed for subdivision as per New York State Town Law. 44570 resolution of adoption amending Town Code Chapter 140 CPF to update administrative procedures for the CPF Pilot Program.
Would like to be added to that, Sunday.
What page is that on?
74.
Thank you.
You can add me as well.
Me also, Sunday, please.
74, okay. Okay. Is that the whole?
I think so, yeah. Town Board Resolution ID 44568 accept the donation of a peace ball from the Rotary Club of Hampton Bays.
Where's it going?
This one's going to Good Ground Park. They're putting one at each of the schools in Hampton Bays. They have one because they get them in fours and they want to put it in Good Ground Park.
Okay. Is that like the one that's at the Girl Scout Camp?
I'm not familiar with the one at the Girl Scout Camp.
I think there's one there. All right. 44537 appoints Kara Conklin Wingfield to Youth Services Specialist Position in Youth Bureau. 44533 appoints Justin LaCiri to Youth Counsel position in the Youth Bureau. 44099 appoints Kim Dodziba to Associate Administrative Position in Municipal Works. 44528 appoints Seth Race to Planet Position in Land Management. 44524 promotes Police Detective Timothy Wilson to rank Sergeant in Southampton Town Police Department.
I'd like to be added to that, Sunday.
Could I be added to that as well, Sunday?
Anyone else, Ricky?
Which one, for Timmy?
Or John, all right. 44480 attendance 2023 New York State Intelligence Summit. 44547 authorized town personnel from the Justice Board to attend the 2024 Association of Towns Annual Meeting and Training School. 44510 assume lead agency for improvements to North Sea Beach Colony Beach Erosion Control District. 44209 notice public hearing as it relates to an improvement to the North Sea Beach Colony Beach Erosion Control District pursuant to Town Law 202B. 44539 notice public hearing for 2024 fire prevention, protection, sorry, fire protection contract.
Town Board Resolution ID 44433 notice a public hearing to enact Town Code Chapter 312-49.4 no stopping on portion of County Road 63, Lake Avenue, North Hampton from County Road 51, Maritza's Riverhead Road to Lakeview Drive.
Would you be added to that, Sunday? Got it.
Town Board Resolution ID 44436 public hearing to amend Town Code Chapter 312-19 parking prohibited in designated locations in order to add regulations on a portion of Lake Avenue and Wildwood Trail, North Hampton.
That one as well, Sunday?
I would too, in the past, too.
Okay.
Good.
The one that we just.
All right. Town Board Resolution ID 44540 public hearing to consider a local law enacting Chapter 255 of the Code of the Town of Southampton entitled Prohibition on Pedaling or Solicitation Within Roadways.
44498 assume lead agency for improvements to Bridgehampton Beach Erosion Control District. 44509 assume lead agency for improvements to Sagaponic Beach Erosion Control District. And there's one other. Which is 44585 accepts maintenance bond as John, it's yours, you want it?
No.
Go ahead. Accept maintenance bond as it relates to the site plan of Bola EM Realty in Hampton Bay. All right, any questions about the agenda? Right. There isn't any corrections, so Sunday, you're good to publish. And we did that quicker than I thought. All right, so. You want to wait till 11:00 to start this next thing? Or should we start gathering people?
We're ready to go, really.
You're ready to go?
Yeah, I'm sure there's some. Folks who are in the town who are watching the meeting know that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what's that, Sunday?
I said by the time we get everybody up here, it'll be 11:00.
So, yeah, so we, we need Kathleen, we need Garde.
Sunday, who's here? You're gonna talk a little bit? And. And we also have representatives from our ambulance corps.
I see.
So.
Okay. So.
Yeah, the. We could start.
All right, Tommy, why don't you set this up? Because you're the lead sponsor on these.
So for, for the board's consideration and really the public's consideration, what we are looking at is a change of the length of service awards points for ambulance districts that are under the purview of Southampton Town. In Southampton Town, our ambulance coverage is served by four ambulance districts. That's Northampton, Flanders-Northampton, West Hampton, Southampton, and Hampton Bay in no particular order. We also have additional coverage by the East Quogue Fire District. They have an ambulance corps as part of their district. And the Bridgehampton Fire District has a corps as part of their fire district. They are separate from us as far as municipal corporations go. Southampton Village does have an ambulance corps, a volunteer ambulance corps with the village, as does the Village of Sag Harbor. We have contracts with the Village of Sag Harbor in our fire protection districts to cover ambulance as well. However, the four that I mentioned earlier, they are under the direct purview of this board and we have contracts with those corps to maintain ambulance coverage. You probably noticed that in our, our budget, the ambulance corps, the cost of running the ambulance is increasing as they are looking to hire more professional people with the ambulance corps to, to maintain coverage. So in order to retain more members and recruit more members and retain more members, one of the things, one of the things that we are proposing is to change the length of service awards program. What this program is, it is a program where the folks in the district contribute to a, a sort of a pension fund. And at a certain age, the fund begins paying these volunteers out at, I think it's a couple hundred dollars a month. For their service in the district. So in order to present this, really, it's, the line share of the work is being done by the Controller's Office, the, the Clerk's Office, as well as our Attorney's Office. So to begin this, I'd like to kick it over to you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Councilman.
Kathleen, before we go, I just want to introduce, we have chiefs of three of our ambulance corps here. We have Ryan White from Hampton Bay's Ambulance Corps. I'm sorry.
Chris Fraser.
Who's Ryan?
No, no, Chris Fraser's in the back there.
Chris, my apologies. I'm on a roll here.
I'm not here for work, I'm here for the.
Right, thank you. We have Jeff Tacme from Flanders-Northampton Ambulance Corps and.
Could you raise your hands?
Sure.
Who's Jeff?
And Ian King from the Southampton Ambulance Corps. And it should be noted that West Hampton is fully on board with this and they've sent a letter of recommendation as, as well. So with that, and Chris, my apologies.
We also have Brian Murphy.
And we also have Ryan Murphy.
Recently designated with a very high certification for an emergency manager. I forget the name of it, but it's, we have an.
It had international on the title.
Congratulations, Ryan, on that. It's nice to know we have somebody on our emergency response team with such high credentials.
Right. A lot of this discussion began in the Southampton Town EMS Advisory Committee. So we had been really discussing this for probably about two years now. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to you, Kathleen.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
So by way of background and as a brief overview, New York State General Municipal Law allows municipalities to establish a length of service award program known as Lo Sap. The Lo Sap program can be set up as either a defined contribution plan or a defined benefit plan. The town established its Lo Sap program in 1996 after voter approval as a defined contribution plan for four of its ambulance districts, which the councilman spoke about. The Hampton Bay's, Southampton, Northampton Flanders, and West Hampton ambulance districts. In 2007, the town amended its Lo Sap program after voter approval and converted it to a defined benefit plan. So in terms of how the program works, active volunteer members of the ambulance companies with which the town ambulance districts contract to provide those services can earn Lo Sap service credit. That service credit is earned and compiled based upon a point system that is set forth in general municipal law. The point system specifies how points are earned or how service credit can be earned by its volunteer members. Those points earned are based upon things like participation in meetings, department responses, training courses, attendance at meetings, attendance at drills. So an ambulance response, for example, is allocated a specific amount of points. Attendance at a drill is allocated a specific amount of points. And then those points are accumulated on an annual basis. Active volunteer members earning 50 service points in a year or more, at least 50 service points in a year, must then be credited with one year of service under the Lo Sap program. So each year, your volunteer ambulance companies with each, which contract with each of your four ambulance districts, submit a certified list to the town identifying all volunteer members who have earned at least 50 points during the previous completed year. The town board then, with the assistance of your Controller's Office, reviews the list and approves the final annual certification. And you'll recall, you see those resolutions each year. I think you most recently did 2022.
This year, 2024 to 22.
For the 22, correct. So at that time that you adopt that resolution with those volunteer members' names on it, each volunteer member is then awarded that one year of Lo Sap credit. That one year of service credit is akin to a pension-like benefit, which is realized as a lifetime monthly benefit payment or service award. Payments begin for eligible volunteer members when they reach age 65. That is the town's entitlement age. That monthly benefit payment or service award is currently equal to $20 per month or $240 per year for each year of service credit earned. The proposal before you and the requests by the ambulance companies with which you contract, and of course, the active volunteer members who provide these emergency services for the town, is to increase that monthly payment or service award from $20 a month to $30 a month, which is equivalent from two, from $240 a year to $360 per year. This change in program benefits is specifically authorized by general municipal law. It's contemplated that you could go to this level. Under the law, the maximum amount of years for which a participant may receive service credit is 40 years. And just a couple of details or notes, a participant vests upon completing five years of ambulance service, so that's their non-forfeitable right, and they must be at least 18 years old to begin receiving that service credit. So to oversimplify it, under this new program, a maximum, the maximum amount a participant could earn would be $14,400, which will be based upon $360 a year after 40 years of volunteer member service once they reached age 65. And remember, every year. And remember, every year is at least fifty hours of that service credit, so it's a lot of work that they're putting in for that credit. In terms of.
Not fifty hours, it's fifty points.
Fifty points, I apologize, yes, thank you.
It could be hundreds.
Yeah, I'm sure many have.
Thousand hours.
Many more than fifty, correct.
To get to the fifty points.
In terms of process, general municipal law states that once the program has been adopted, it may be changed by resolution of this board and the approval of a proposition at a referendum of the district voters. Town law then addresses special elections, which is run by your town clerk. And unless you have any further questions from me at this time, I'd suggest.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, turn it over to Sunday.
So, first question, as the rate goes from twenty dollars to thirty dollars, do the years that they got LoSAP on the twenty-dollar convert now to thirty-dollar years?
No, that's a good question. It's actually in your resolution that you'll be considering. So, this is just proactive from January first perspective, thank you, from January first, two thousand and twenty-four forward. All of those, all of the credit that was earned prior to this remains at that twenty-dollar level, and then going forward, if adopted by the voters and yourselves, that would be the thirty-dollar level.
So, somebody's keeping track of how many years they have at twenty dollars a month and how many years they have.
We were hoping to have.
We do.
We do have them, right? They're the actuaries who have done all of that work.
And then the, the taxpayers within the ambulance district would pay that additional difference, right?
Correct.
And the vote, which I guess we'll, we'll talk about in a little bit, but it's going to be, is it one vote that covers everybody?
No, each district.
Will have their own vote?
Correct.
All right, so there'll be multiple elections?
So, there's four, they'll, and your town clerk.
As part of the presentation.
There'll be four. Four district elections.
Okay. Or any other places for Kathleen?
Well, just related to that, I think I read somewhere it was December sixth.
I'm going to present all that information.
Because I'm just curious how we can get there that fast. That would be great.
So, our decision, our decision is essentially to approve a public referendum for the people of the district to approve this change.
Correct. And just legally speaking, John, to answer that question, we have to have the vote between thirty days and ninety days of the day that you adopt that resolution, so it is meant to be a rather expedited process. And your resolution is proposed to become, come before you on Tuesday.
Okay. And we have flexibility, like if we didn't want to go to thirty, but twenty-five, I'm not saying that that's the case, but is it, is it, you have to either have twenty or thirty, or is it?
That's a good question. So, general municipal law is pretty specific, and it has different tiers, and it's, it's either twenty or thirty. It doesn't have twenty-five, yeah.
It's like the quantum theory of the LoSAP. Okay, well, any other questions? All right, so, Sunday, you're next?
Yes, I suppose so. I just want to start off by saying that in two thousand and seven, when the second vote took place, I was in my first term of office, two months into my first term of office, when the town board voted to have four ambulance districts.
Initiation by fire.
It was absolutely. And I learned quite a bit, but I thankfully had Kathleen Murray back then as well, who was assigned to work with me to execute the election. And my deputy, Kim Otani, I have to credit her as well, because she is part of our election team, and we have successfully run probably over a dozen elections for special districts for the town. So, we are quite experienced now, so hopefully this will go quite smoothly, because we do have a limited amount of time to execute this, and a lot of things have to happen. Right now, I'm waiting for insurance certificates in order to get to the BOE, to order our equipment, and all of the services that we require, and get into their queue. We have to create ballots. We have to get them approved, and then we have to have them printed. We're doing them both in English and Spanish. We will have the propositions available in both languages as well. You know, we very much, I have to say, we very much appreciate all of our ambulance districts and what the, the services that they provide to our communities, so this is really something that we, we really are happy to, to work on and, and with them. Upon adoption of the resolution on Tuesday, the LoSAP election will be scheduled to be held for all four ambulance districts, Hampton Bays, Northampton, Flanders, Southampton, and Westhampton on December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are using the districts' names as there is some confusion with, we don't want to create any confusion, because some of them are different. So, we're going to use all just district names for the election identification.
That Board of Elections, Dave?
It's, it's what the town refers to the districts as.
So, the ambulance companies with which you contract don't have the exact same name as the district in some circumstances, so, for example, we have the Northampton-Flanders ambulance district. However, you contract with the Flanders-Northampton Volunteer Ambulance Company. And then also, as it relates to Westhampton, your district is the Westhampton ambulance district, but you contract with the Westhampton War Memorial Ambulance Association.
What I'm asking, I guess, is in terms of who gets to vote in notification to voters? Are we using a list provided by the ambulance?
BOE.
BOE.
Let me continue on. We're going to get to all of that, because the BOE, I work directly with the BOE as the commissioner of the election. So, and I have tremendous support with Kathleen. We're in lockstep when we, we go through all of these things. But what's going to happen, I just want to continue on with, with December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, is the date of the election from two PM to eight PM for all four districts. They will take, the elections will take place at the Activity Building in Red Creek Park in Hampton Bays. It's located at one oh-two Old Riverhead Road in Hampton Bays. It's centrally located with easy access off of Sunrise and Route twenty-four. This will reduce some of the costs we would incur having them all in one location.
Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So, we have one location for all four districts?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay. They will all have their own individual machines, individual ballots, individual inspectors, signage, everything will be separate. The Activity Center, I went over there, and it's, it's actually set up really well, because the outlets are, are on all four sides of the walls, so I can separate out the districts. We're going to have a lot of signage to make it very clear, so they'll have their own inspector tables to go to, to get their ballots. The machine will be in close proximity. I, along with a couple other people, will be the greeters to guide people to the proper district in case there's any confusion, to make sure that they're submitting the right ballot into the, the right machines, which is, is a very important process. There will be accessibility machines, now one available for each district. We will have two machines at each district, so that if one were to stop working, which I have experienced in the course of my time running elections, we will have an alternate machine to use. I have to, as soon as I can get the insurance certificates, I, I hope by today or tomorrow, I can start getting the ball rolling and getting the inspector lists, so that I can start contacting people to make sure that, you know, it's holiday time, so we have to make sure we can get the people, before they make too many plans in advance, to man each of the districts. And they just held some training at the BOE, so hopefully there'll be some additional people to choose from in the pool. So, everything will start flowing as soon as I can submit the request for services. I'm going to be getting active and inactive registrant lists. We will have forms, so that nobody who feels they're entitled to vote will leave without voting. And then any ones that are questionable, I am going to have a phone line available with the BOE, so that we can call and try and work through some of the issues. But either way, we will have that paper ballot that people can fill out, will be put aside and then reviewed by the BOE for sufficiency to be included in the, in the vote. We're going to have poll rosters, we're going to have the inspector list, the signage, the ballots, and the abstracts with the propositions onsite, which are all run through the BOE as well. I looked at the election costs. It's hard for me to predict what they will be exactly, but I can tell you that the last time we ran this in two thousand and seven, the costs overall that came through my office were forty-five hundred dollars, which was split between the four districts. But I anticipate the expenses to run elections have risen quite a bit since then. The election machine rentals back then were thirty-five dollars per machine, and now they're three hundred. So, but that was one of the most significant increase in costs that I identified on the sheets. But we are applying for exemptions for certain expenses that are allowed because of the status of the ambulance districts. So, anything that I can do to reduce the costs, I certainly will, you know, do my best to do that, but.
And Sunday, the cost is going to be borne by the individual ambulance districts eventually?
Yes, yes.
They'll reimburse Sunday's, yes. Yes, we already had this discussion.
Yes.
The ambulance will reimburse Sunday's expenses for.
So, the Board of Elections is also providing staff?
The Board of Elections is going to provide me with a list of inspectors, and then they're out. Then it's up to me to call them up and get them where they need to be, bring them in, have some training in advance, go over everything that's going to happen. I'm going to see if I can get a captain.
But I, I guess my question was, does the Board of Elections pay them, or are we paying them?
We pay for everything. They're, they're just leasing us the equipment. They're providing us with the voter registration, with the voter lists, because the ambulances hold their own elections from time to time. And they get the same list from the BOE that we're going to use. But, you know, things change, and sometimes people get deactivated, and they don't know it, and they'll show up and be upset, and, you know, we'll make sure they can still vote. But we have the maps of the, of the districts as well. The BOE provides us with all of the information, and then we just use it accordingly. I need to find out from the BOE how much people currently get paid. I have no idea. Back then, it was twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. That's not even minimum wage right now, so I'm certain it's gone up quite a bit since then.
And as town clerk, you said, as the election commissioner of this election, these four elections?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
That's not a, that's a, it's our election that we run for the election districts, and you're the commissioner, and we go through the Board of Elections for the poll workers and, and the machines.
And I can assign poll workers myself that I feel are sufficient if we don't have enough, that we feel, you know, we don't think we have enough to, to execute this properly. So, my deputy will be working. Kathleen is always there, hand-making sure everything's going smoothly. So, we'll make sure that we have plenty of volunteers to, to make sure it runs, runs smoothly, and that people can get breaks. I mean, six hours is a long time. You know, and we'll, we'll make sure there's some food there.
So, so last time you did this in two thousand and seven, they were, it was the individual districts were hosting machines that were separate and not centralized?
No, they, we, we, I went to four different ambulance barns all day long, you know.
Yeah, so this time you're centralizing it.
It just makes so much more sense, quite frankly, for staffing purposes, and for logistics, and traffic, and everything else. I reached out to the Southampton chief, Ian, and I had a conversation, because their ambulance district is furthest away.
Right.
And would experience traffic potentially and such, so we spoke about the hours, and two to eight seemed to make the most sense, and he did not feel that that was problematic for them to come to vote. Obviously Hampton Bays is in close proximity. Flanders can come over on twenty-four and take a left before they get into Lantoc Highway and have access that way. And Westhampton can get right on Sunrise and get off the Hampton Bays exit and also be right there, you know, in, in a short period of time. So, I, as long as Southampton was on board with coming to Hampton Bays, that was my, my biggest concern as far as inconvenience. So, I wanted to make sure that they were on board, and Ian was very nice and comely.
The hours, I think, will make it okay. I don't think that'll be a problem.
So, Sunday, first, thank you, because I know it's a lot of work for your office, and it's a, it's a good thing for our volunteers, so, but appreciate all the work you have to do in conjunction with this. In terms of noticing voters, and, you know, you know, I, I'm sure that the ambulance will turn out a lot of volunteers, because this is important to them, but in terms of the public coming out, and I think most people will support this. But how would the general public know that there's an election going on? And also, what, how would they know the financial impact, so they know what they're voting for? I, I see that some of the financial impacts have been determined, what it would cost the particular taxpayer, but how would the public know that?
Well, we've had, in the past, in two thousand and seven, the ambulance districts worked together, and there was a, a public relations campaign that took place, but Robert Ross was also here in the building, and he was pretty much the organizer, organizer of a lot of those activities. But we've discussed taking out a full-page ad in Southampton Press, which is the town's official newspaper, to alert people of the elections taking place.
There's no formal notice requirement?
Well, we have legal ads that go in the newspaper that you're, as soon as you adopt that resolution, that, that legal ad is going to go directly into the newspaper.
Yeah, I'd like to do a little bit more, because a lot of people don't look at those legal notices.
I was thinking maybe collectively that the, the ambulance districts may have some thoughts on how to best reach out to the.
We're going to be going.
The county EMS advisory, I'm sure would be willing to put something together.
So, as far as, as ambulance is concerned, we do have a public website that we made, so we can post it on our website, because it's open to the public. That's how we do membership applications and things like that, so that, that notice can be posted on our department website as well.
We can do the same thing at Southampton.
Yeah, but I'd like something that's neutral, like not necessarily vote yes for the LoSAP increase, but something like, you know, so just let the public know where that election is going to be held on a certain date, and what's, what it's for, and let them come to their own conclusion.
This, and, you know, we can supply the resolution that you're going to adopt. It has the proposition, and it has the abstract.
Yeah, I mean, we can do a press release and put it on our social media.
And we're going to have this in Spanish as well. So, we're going to be posting it on the town's website. We're going to provide it in both languages to the ambulance districts, so that they can post that as well, to be inclusive. And we're going to have ballots in Spanish, and we're going to.
I think if we took out an ad in the Southampton Press, I'd feel better that we were, you know, doing our due diligence to alert the residents and taxpayers that there's an election going on, and if they want to come. Is there a way to vote absentee or mail-in? No, they have to show up.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. What's, what was the typical turnout in two thousand and seven?
In two thousand and seven, the total amount of voters that turned out for all four districts was just over four hundred people.
And it was probably ninety-five percent positive.
That's close, yes.
We'll get more this time.
You think? Last time it was held, they had four locations. I think we get less this time, but.
I don't.
No? Okay, you're saying four hundred?
Stay positive. No, I think we'll have more than four hundred, because our population has increased significantly since two thousand and seven, if you look at the census. But I think that if the.
I don't know that our number of volunteers have increased. In the ambulances, they're using more paid staff than they, than they had back then, so I don't know what the rosters are. Some of them have struggled to find volunteers. That's why we're doing this, to make, incentivize volunteering. But we'll see, we'll find out. But I, I do think we should put an ad out.
We're planning to put one out.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we had it from the beginning.
We just want to make sure the board was okay for that, just.
Well, you're going to pay for it, yeah.
It's a full page, right? And the press, east and west?
Another option is a mailer, to send out a postcard mail, which is much more expensive.
A lot's more money.
We could go that rather.
And you're charging that back to the people who have been a vote on the increase, so.
But the full page is probably a lot cheaper than the mailer.
Yes.
I spoke to one of the reporters from the press, and they plan on doing some articles on this as well.
And you would vet the list from two thousand and seven as well to help you get, get to that point?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The, the list that you have from two thousand and seven.
The list of what?
Of, of people who voted is still current, and that added to.
No.
No?
No, we're getting a fresh one from the BOE.
From the BOE, okay, so they're not.
From two thousand and twenty-three.
They're not, okay, well, that's interesting.
Yeah, two thousand and seven.
Because typically, they, yeah, and other, other, okay, that's interesting. So, you start press, I think it's good.
It's like voting in a general election. You're not going to use a list of registered voters from two thousand and seven.
Well, except this is an election year, so people are going to, going to vote in November, and then they're going to vote in December, right?
This is true.
Yeah, this will be in December. Yeah, this will be in December. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not worried that it's about the passage of it. I'm only worried about somebody criticizing us later and saying, you held this election in secret.
Well, if the ambulance districts have the ability to put out the, the same information that we're putting in the legal ad and in the newspaper to their membership without asking them to vote one way or the other, just saying, this is a vote that's coming up. They, you know, obviously going to make up their own minds.
And they have the right to do that.
But they must have a tremendous amount of people on these distribution lists, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's not, I'm more worried about the general public who might later criticize us for not doing our due diligence to, or, or a decent effort to let them know there was an election going on.
Well, the fire districts, our elections are the same month and we can ask them if they knew about those.
Most people don't.
And, and they do the requirements, they, they put it out there.
Quite frankly, you know, people see them, but they don't, I don't know. People aren't as motivated to go out for these types of, unfortunately, because they're our first responders. And, you know, I think that they're important elections myself personally, but not everybody is as motivated, quite frankly, over the years. That's the trend, to go out and vote. They get on the phone a lot of times. I know at the firehouse at, in West Hampton to make sure people are coming out.
So, would you like to put out a mailer? I mean, that is an option, is we can mail.
I think the ad we should do. I don't think we need to do a mailer. I, I think the, a full-page ad.
Okay.
Neutral ad, just alerting everybody that there's an election going on. Does anybody feel that we should do, go beyond that?
No.
No, because I think you're right. We want, we want our volunteers to get the maximum available to them and not sort of spend that upfront and then what's the point?
Yeah, the individual districts have websites. They have their own social media campaigns. I think the word will get out with no problem. I would hope we'd have more than four hundred votes in Hampton Bays alone because that's probably one out of every six people you carry in the ambulance over the course of a year, so.
Yeah, and what are the costs in Hampton Bays? It's like a dollar or something, two dollars a year per taxpayer.
Which is our next segment. A good segue, or do you have anything else?
No, I think I've covered it. This is a work in progress and as soon as we're able to get going, everything will, you know, the work will begin, that's for sure. So, we're looking forward to getting started. And the importance was of it getting done before the end of the year was to allow the program to start January first. So, that's why we were squeezing it in between the holidays. It's not the whole, you know, optimal time to have another election, but it's the time we need to in order to get this established for these, the volunteers.
For the service credit and our actuary numbers to be accurate. The budgetary requirements are going to kick in in the following.
Correct, that'll be in the twenty, twenty twenty-five.
So.
Five, yes.
With that, Dorota, how much is this going to cost?
So, we reached out to Penflex and they are here with us via Zoom. And they have provided their actuarial cost estimates of potential increases of annual contributions. And if you look at there, there is a schedule provided for each district that shows the assessed value for each of the ambulance districts, the contribution that we paid this year for the twenty twenty-two points, points that were accrued. And then the estimated LoSAP contribution, if we kept the rate at the twenty dollars. Then estimated twenty twenty-four contribution, if the rate went to thirty thou, thirty dollars. And then the difference. And then, so we can look at the first one, which is the Flanders. You'll see that this year, the LoSAP contribution, the annual contribution for the volunteers was twenty-two thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars. If we kept the same number of volunteers and the same points that were accrued, in twenty twenty-four at twenty dollars, that would cost us about twenty-nine thousand dollars. And if we go to thirty, that would be forty-seven thousand, a difference of eighteen thousand, which equates to about eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents increase for a household with five hundred thousand assessed value. And the same applies to all the other four.
Except that their increases are way less.
Only because the assessed values are higher. So, we spread over, you know, we spread over a bigger amount. Any questions?
For, for five hundred thousand of assessed value?
For five hundred thousand, correct.
So, the other, well, you go on to the other districts.
So, this for Southampton, the twenty twenty-three LoSAP contribution was twenty-five thousand six hundred nine dollars. And estimated contribution for twenty twenty-four would be thirty-one at the rate of twenty dollars. Then it would go up to sixty-one thousand annual contribution if we increase the rate to the thirty dollars. That's the difference of thirty thousand dollars, which is really only a dollar and eleven cents per household with five hundred thousand assessed value.
So, assuming that most homes are a million, worth a million and a half.
Then that would be doubled, it would be to, right, because two thousand twenty-two cents, correct.
So, it's three dollars and thirty-three cents if your house is worth one point five million.
In Southampton, yes, in, like Hampton Bays. And these are, you're basing on assessment, actual assessment, not adjusted to equalization, right?
Correct. I'm just saying, these are the assessed values as presented in our assessment rule.
Five hundred thousand is probably the average house in Hampton Bays. Even though they're worth a million, it's probably in our assessment rules, the average house is a one-half million.
If we only did Southampton, we could probably do a million, but because we're talking about Flanders, Southampton and Hampton Bays, the five hundred.
So, you picked the half a million dollar assessed value.
Yeah, it seems like a more reasonable assessed value.
This is going to be a strange question. When you are projecting the LoSAP for the following year, are you just simply assuming everybody who's on LoSAP currently would be on LoSAP again next year?
Right, we took, we took the information from.
And then, and they would get the thirty for that, but they wouldn't get it till the following year, so that's not even.
Well, I think the assumption, and we can add the benefits.
And then, and then also some people are, there's going to be new volunteers and sadly, some volunteers will pass who've been on LoSAP. And so, it's a little complicated. I know, is that all in your calculations?
I think it's a moving target.
Hi, yes, this is Kate. You guys can hear her, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes, there's certainly a mortality component that's in, in our calculations always, right? We have, we have mortality table that we use, so it takes into account obviously people passing. And then, to answer your question, the thirty-dollar increase would start with twenty twenty-four service credit. And our calculations project that those who are actively volunteering and earning those fifty points per year will continue to earn into the future fifty points per year. And then they'll be continuing to earn at that thirty-dollar rate. And, and that's why you see sort of an increase in the contribution immediately next year, even though it, they really have to earn in twenty twenty-four for anybody to start having that thirty dollars. But there's all projections included in here.
Right, okay, so you're setting it aside sort of, even though they won't get that in twenty twenty-four technically?
Correct, I mean, this is all pre-funding. That's really what the actuarial valuations do, right? We're not, we're not, it's not a pay-to-plan. It's just like your pension plan, state pension plan, you want to pre-fund these.
Got it, yeah. So, you're putting it in the account for when, a later date, okay. That makes sense. Is, is, it's generally fully funded?
Uh, yes, actually, all of the plans, even after, in twenty twenty-two was a bad investment year. So, there was a decline in, in overall in the funds for everybody. But they were still all at or above one hundred percent funded. You'll see the Sam, South, or I'm sorry, West Hampton was at ninety-eight percent funded. That was the lowest funded ratio of all of them. So, they are all still.
Does that sit in your account or our account?
In, in the investment, the investment account that's holding the funds is with Glens Falls National Bank.
And is there, is that being managed to try to maximize interest and things like that?
Oh, yes, absolutely. It's all managed through Glens Falls National Bank. These are centrally administered through the comptroller's office. So, Glens Falls is the trust company chosen by the comptroller's office to handle these funds.
So, it's indexed.
So, is there ever a point possibly where the tax collection could be lowered because that interest gets applied?
Well, it is. It's really all handled and that's one of the assumptions in the valuation is, is what the underlying investments will be earning in the future, right? And so, it is allocated to a portion of stocks and bonds, obviously. And we currently assume around a five and a half percent rate of return, long-term. So, we are realizing investment gains in a sense. And to the degree that the fund overperforms, then yes, the contributions decline.
All right, so, that's, yeah, the main point I was getting at, I just wanted to make sure that the interest on the held LoSAP money was benefiting the ratepayers, the taxpayers. So, it, it is. Okay. I know it's quirky question, but it's, I think it's important.
Absolutely.
I do share a responsibility, right? So, all right, any other questions? Well, just to the point, it brings up the question of liability for, for protection of the fund if it's in our account.
No, we, we show them on our books, but Glens Falls administrate the plan.
They, and they pay, all right.
They, they choose the investment, not us. We don't.
Right.
Well, she just said the comptroller, the overarching policies of the New York State comptroller. Okay.
But we don't choose, they choose the investment, you know, how we allocate it.
And they do the payouts over time.
Correct, correct.
How is Penflex compensated? Is it a straight percentage?
Um, no. We bill the comptroller's office for our services and that's included in the contribution that you all pay each year.
Yeah, they don't, they don't, we don't.
Does it come out of the ambulance districts or is that?
Yes.
They're paid as administering the program.
I'm sure, yes, yes.
Yeah, we have Penflex as an example. Hampton Bays is a part of our budget, it's aligned with our budget for insurance.
And that was all, that was all part of your, the nineteen ninety-five establishment, right, of your LoSAP program? So, just, you had a different benefit plan at that time, but that was all, it's all laid out in general municipal law. And, you know, this is the, the program that's been presented.
Right.
So, voters, voters already passed upon that in nineteen ninety-five when you established that program.
So, every district uses Penflex?
No.
No, no?
Well, in, there was a list. In South, we use Penflex for all the, for our ambulances.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So, do we go through each one of the districts, the cost ramifications?
I mean, it's right there. If you want to go through them, we can.
All right, so the increase per five hundred thousand for?
For Flanders would be eleven dollars sixty-nine cents. Southampton, a dollar eleven. West Hampton, we estimated about a dollar six. And Hampton Bays, two dollars and ten cents.
Okay.
Money well spent.
On five hundred thousand.
On five hundred thousand.
For Flanders, you know, the eleven sixty-nine a year is, that's obviously jumps out, right? Now, that is just simply because there's so many properties off the tax rolls there?
I mean, look at the assessed value on the left. You can see the difference in assessed values between Flanders and every other district. I'm assuming the households, you know, each house is valued less so that, you know, in total.
There's a lot off the tax rolls there.
As well, I really don't know.
They do get CPF pilat.
They do, absolutely.
It's taxable population too, right, so.
Yes, that's all correct. Everybody that gets, pays that tax bill.
Right. And we've talked about other ways to increase, I mean, there's the ones doing third-party billing. We're trying to get more from the county for prisoner transport. We're trying to do some things to bring that down.
West Hampton also has third-party billing now.
Oh, they do now, yeah.
You didn't even start it.
That's recently.
But this cost is just for LoSAP. This is not.
This is just a LoSAP. That has nothing to do with the total contract.
But it's, but in terms of the total taxes that a resident pays, it's, I mean, it's not a big jump, eleven dollars, but, you know, that's an area that the income's tend to be less.
That eleven dollar increase is just for, it's not the department increase overall.
No, the contract in it, in the total is, I'm sure it's going to be more than, you know, eleven dollars.
But, you know, I've been asking for like additional sixty thousand contribution from Suffolk County toward the ambulance for the prisoner transports. That would, I'm sure, more than wipe this out since the cost here is eighteen thousand additional dollars. If they get an extra sixty thousand, that's a minus number over there. All right. Okay.
So, what I'd like to do is to call the chiefs up for any questions that the board might have of the chiefs for operations or training or anything like that. Do you gentlemen be? Okay. Do you have any questions for our members of, of our town employees here? Kathleen?
No one?
I'm going to need a budget line. I have to pay as I go, so.
Well, that's ready, still in twenty twenty-three, so we'll.
That gets billed back to the entries too, right?
Yeah, but we have to pay it first.
Yeah, we have to live it out, so we'll have to.
Send the voting machines if I don't pay them.
Oh, you have to pay for the actual machines?
I'll check and see.
You have, I'm sure we can come up with them.
We'll work on it. I don't, yeah, I don't have the money in my budget to cover it, but, um, because I'm so conservative and mindful of the taxpayers.
Yes, you are.
So.
What are you doing for?
But I, we'll, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you, Dorota.
So, you guys are dismissed. You can go.
Any questions?
Well, I, I have one or two questions. If one of you want to go to the podium, I, I have a question about requirements. And, and the ti, and just how long a, a typical call goes? So, how much time does it take to get certifications and what are some of the certifications in the EMS corps?
So, primarily for, primarily it's EMT and paramedic. Mostly it's EMT because paramedic takes so much more time. EMT is roughly, I forget the number of hours.
It's about two hundred hours for an EMT.
But it's like, it's about seven credits if you want to compare it to a college class, whereas the paramedic class is like thirty-six credits.
Paramedic is roughly twelve hundred hours. And that is just to get your initial certification, so.
Hold on, guys.
And then every single year, um, you have to do is continued medical, CMEs, continual magic, medical education or recertify every three years. So, every three years, whether it's an EMT or a paramedic, you're recertifying your certification. You need to do with the classroom time or the continuing medical education. But it works out to, you know, roughly an additional two hundred hours of training or twelve hundred hours every three years. So, and they're not being compensated for that. So, that's on people's own time after work, weekends, doing online courses or sitting down for a refresher course with Suffolk County EMS.
And that doesn't include the meetings and drills? It doesn't, you know, it doesn't include that stuff. You know, they have to recertify every three years, but then there's also the meeting and drills that we do. We do those monthly, um, you know, and there's other department requirements as well.
And is recertification required to meet your LoSAP?
It's part of the LoSAP formula. You can apply a certain amount of points. I believe if you're recertification, it's roughly ten points out of the fifty points towards your total. So, on your recertification year, you can apply up to ten points of your fifty-point credit towards, because it's such a laborious thing.
So, the rest are called?
So, you still have forty percent, which could be depending, you know, department trainings, fundraising events, drills, meetings. And then there's a certain percentage for call lines. So, it's, you can't just have what people call it, the knife and fork a group, that they show up to dinners and meetings and then don't, you know, contribute to the ambulance.
We get a breakdown from Penflex of how we're actually allowed to, to give the points. And so, like for trainings, they get so many points per hours of training. You know, certain classes might be worth one point, whereas, you know, somebody goes and takes an EMT class, they're pretty much going to get, I think, like ten points or fifteen points for the year, stuff like that. So, we get a breakdown of how we're allowed to give the points.
Okay, one last question and this is for each of you. Chris, one call in Hampton Bays, how much time is it for the?
Minimum time for us is one hour. And that's with a really quick turnaround, just dropping the patient off at a hospital. Bad call could be upwards of three hours.
One call?
One call.
One ambulance?
One ambulance. Uh, just for an estimate, so you know, we do roughly sixteen to seventeen hundred calls a year.
Is that the same in Southampton?
Uh, we do right around eleven hundred. I think last year we were just under twelve hundred. But we do, average call is about an hour. Occasionally, we do have the long ones. You know, we have been taking people over at the Stone more often recently, so those do add some time, but usually about an hour.
Jeff?
Uh, we, I think we averaged just over thirteen hundred last year. It is roughly an hour for a quick turnaround call.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of questions. So, first, thank you guys for your service. So. Um, I have a couple of questions. So first, thank you guys for your service. It's so important. And the low SAP program is a great program. I was at the county as when we started this program, authorizing this program, and I think it's been a real success story. And yeah, time has gone on, inflation, cost of living has gone up, it's, you know, it's time to do an adjustment. At one point, the town did audit the program. You may remember that. And there were a number of different issues in terms of like people signing other people's names on sign-in sheets, or people claiming low SAP credit for, you know, something that might not have been authorized. Like, I don't know, if you go to a town board meeting, do you get low SAP? Probably you do get low SAP. But, you know, if you, you know, wash the ambulance, you get low SAP. But if you do other things in the ambulance, Barney might not get. So it's really, there's a lot of rules around it. But my, my biggest concern is we see more and more people who are salaried and volunteering to try to keep track of whether it's a low SAP credit or whether they're paid. You can't, you can't have double dipping. It's getting, I think, harder and harder. What are you guys doing to make sure that you're not overlapping?
So for Hampton Bay specifically, we have a electronic tracking software and dispatching software. It's called Red Alert. It's actually administered by the Hampton Bay Fire Department. So it's an outside third party, because they provide our dispatching services. So for a call, for instance, if they sign on, that person signs on through the Red Alert app, and now it's electronically tracked that they were on that call, they either went to the scene, transported, stayed back in district. And we're also using that program to track our trainings. So now we have an electronic fingerprint of who attended and things like that. So it's really helped us to get away from that paper record, so to speak, where things can be fudged or signed in. Now it's a, you know, if you didn't sign on on your phone for that app that you were there, there's no other way.
But you do, if you're, if you're on call, potentially, you do get credit as well.
Correct. We have another online scheduling software called Went to Work. So that's, it's a electronic, and I believe a lot of the other departments use that for scheduling. It's standard for pretty much all of.
We don't use Went to Work for our volunteer side. It's pretty much just for the employees, but we use Run Alert. We don't have a fingerprint system yet, but we're all moving in that direction.
But do you feel like you have pretty good accounting in terms for those, particularly for those people who are both paid and volunteer?
And then the other thing that went with that is Suffolk County just went to the ESO program, which electronically tracks the patient care reports, so it's no longer a paper record. So somebody can't just sign a name onto the bottom. It's gotta be actually, so you can match up that patient care report, which is now electronically monitored with the state along with our Red Alert system. So it's really almost impossible now to add people to that after the fact.
Let me ask just one unrelated to low SAP, but, you know, years ago, the county was sort of on this campaign to reduce the response times. Do you remember this? The guy, Dave Bishop, was like leading, he was a legislator, and he kind of made us all jump through a lot of hoops. There were a lot of, I guess, mutual aid calls back then. There was, there were some of the departments, it appeared, were taking too long after that 911 call to actually show up. How, how are we doing?
So this is why you're in the position you're in now, because that's why you've ended up with so many employees, because you have, you have to meet that gap. You know, the county came out, they wanted people on scene with, they wanted people on scene within nine minutes. And to be able to meet that, you know, unfortunately, with the volunteers at the time and the way to do it, that's why you have employees now. So they're on the road, they're getting there first, then the volunteers are backfilling. So that's pretty much, that, that has been fixed. The response times are not a problem anymore.
And would you say the hybrid system is, is working?
Yeah.
The paid and then volunteer drivers and?
For, I know for us it does. We have, you know, for Southampton, we have a paid ALS unit on and a paid BLS unit on during the day. And they get backfilled by volunteers. You know, we have a lot of days where we're running two, three calls at the same time, so the volunteers are still coming out and backfilling and growing up. So we're still, you know, the hybrid system works great.
To address one of the concerns that you brought up supervisor earlier, you, you probably remember in 2019, the Southampton Town Board codified, along with the state, all of the things that are acceptable for low SAP points. So that is unified throughout the town along with the state of New York. Tom? Jeff, would you introduce the individual who, who is with you here?
This one?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, this is Dominic, so I wanted to use my second time.
Dominic, nice to meet you again. Thank you.
We may have been joined by more volunteer folks.
Yes. They are Andy and Lena Craswood. Craswood, Craswood, they're both volunteers.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you for your service. And that old, that was old Remsco, right? That was sort of?
Yeah, it was a big push, it was a county-wide push to, to improve response times.
Okay, so, and how's the barn doing? Are you guys close in Southampton?
Uh, we'll have to talk.
We'll have to talk, as I was saying. All right. Do we have a projected date for the?
Uh, no, they won't give us one.
So for this particular resolution, it is on for Tuesday night's meeting. We do not, it's, no public hearings are required on this resolution. That's why we're having a work session here today. And so this will be before the board for your consideration then. Thank you.
You guys have any questions for us?
I don't think so. Pretty straightforward.
No, they're already halfway on the door.
Okay. What's that?
You can get back to your date now.
Right.
No, again, we're, we're appreciative of all that you do, so we wanna support you best we can. It's a partnership here.
And as far as the notification and stuff, any, any materials you guys have, we have our websites and social media. We'll put everything up there. So whatever you guys produce.
We'll be working with you on all of that.
Same thing, with social media and websites.
Documents, numbers, what supervisor said, tax impact?
Yeah, everything.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, Chris, Ian, thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Penn Flex folks.
Who are gone.
They might still be there. It's not showing it. All right, thank you, everybody. Ryan, before you leave, just.
Oh, you almost made it.
Can I just, I just, I just wanna embarrass you, you know?
You gotta tell us the title so Jay knows it.
Yeah, tell, tell me. I know you were, you got this elite distinguishing title now as an emergency responder. So what was that? And I want the world to know that, so.
Thank you, supervisor. So, yeah, no, I'm rather proud that, just recently, last week, the International Association of Emergency Managers did award me the, the status as a certified emergency manager with their organization. I found out after that that there are actually only two others in Suffolk County. They don't work for Suffolk County, but there are two other certified emergency managers in the entire county of Suffolk, and only six total certified individuals through I A E M in Suffolk County. I thought there were a few more than that, but I guess there's just a small number of us. There are more in NASA and the city, but very few people out here. So it was, it was a lot. It was a lot of, a lot of work in the certification process. A lot of, had to put forward about 300 or 400 hours worth of training to them for review, drills and exercises, actual, you know, real-world emergencies and major events for them to look at and determine whether or not it met their, their criteria. So, and, and sit through an exam and have to, you know, put my phone in a lockbox so that it couldn't be in my possession and all sorts. As the cameras point, it looked like something from Spies Like Us when, you know, sat in the room and took the exam.
Were you able to give them a narrative, specifically about a month after you were hired? The world went into a lockdown situation.
Well, you know, I met, I met Ryan when he was with the county, when Dune Road was washing away. And, you know, it was getting really dicey there.
We had a reunion just recently.
Yeah, we did. Standing on what was left of the dune.
Yeah.
About to wash away, and Ryan was working for Suffolk County Fres, and yeah, that was our first experience. Talk about initiation by fire.
Yeah, definitely. So I appreciate that.
We're very proud of you and the work that you're doing. And it's, again, it's nice to know in times of, you know, crisis, emergency, that we have an individual who is, you know, distinguished in terms of their training, so.
Thank you. Yeah, and just to comment on the EMS stuff while, while I'm up here and the potential low SAP. You know, when I was with the county, when I first started with them, I oversaw the recruitment and retention program for the county of Suffolk for all fire and EMS, which included the scholarship program for firefighters and EMTs at Suffolk County Community College, and, and the Volunteer to Be Amazing campaign that was launched, you know, countywide. We were on Monday Night Football, everything like that, with our ads and, and marketing to try and increase the number of volunteers in the county. The Fireman's Association of State in New York, which a lot of EMS is also fire service-based EMS on top of the, the volunteer ambulance corps that we spoke to today, you know, just recently updated their numbers. And the volunteer service, which we have, you know, 109 volunteer fire departments in Suffolk County and 27 volunteer ambulance corps, you spoke to, to four of them here today that are in our town. They're all volunteer, and the volunteer service in the state of New York is estimated to save the taxpayers throughout the state approximately $4.7 billion annually versus complete turnover to a career service. The individual estimates for different counties and what that would mount to in, in changes to tax levy is anywhere from about 5.8% to about 133% tax increase in different counties if you had to convert from a, a volunteer service to a paid service. So although this is a, an increase to, to some of the budgets, and it's, it's a relatively small increase, the cost to incentivize volunteerism and the savings experienced by volunteerism versus the conversion to a full career service, we're, we're dealing with a bit of a hybrid service now with some paid staff members to assist in keeping those, those response times down and provide care as fast as possible. The cost to, to do something small like, like an increase to a low SAP program from the, the 20 to 30 and the impacts to taxpayers, it, when you, when you weigh costs versus benefits, it is far superior to look at an option like this to try and incentivize volunteerism and experience the cost savings associated with that versus to have to continue to find additional paid staff members to fill that, that delta that would exist otherwise. So I applaud the board for considering this option as a mechanism to try and, and preserve the volunteer service and continue to have the taxpayers experience the benefits of that in the town of Southampton.
The paid service would likely be a lower level of care, I suspect, too, or they, they cut corners. You know, if it's a private company, who knows? But, you know, the fact, you know, they're, they gotta charge for everything. And right now, most ambulance transports are not charged.
Right, right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, so it's noon, just about. I'm okay with skipping updates, if everybody else is okay. If there's anything that's time-sensitive.
Nope.
All right. All right, so what, we have a number of items for executive session. So we have confidential, legal advice, contracts, personnel, acquisitions. And I think that's it. So I will make a motion to end our work session, go into executive session on those items.
Second.
Second by councilman. Will there be a vote in favor?
Aye.
You guys will take 15 minutes and try to get a bite?
Yeah.